Good evening and welcome to Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, October 18th. We're getting started a little late because our work session, a community discussion about marijuana dispensaries and our opportunity to opt out, it took a bit longer. Anyone who's interested in catching up with that and might not have seen it can see it online at PCTV76.org. So, a couple of announcements to make. Let me just get back to that page. The first is my COVID report. I look forward with enthusiasm to the possibility that someday I won't make one. That's not quite here yet. Through the 15th of October, we have 15 new positives. That kind of roughly speaking tracks our experience in September where in the entire month of September, we had 25 positives, way better than the month of August when we had 78. So, our status right now is 11 positive cases extant right now, one new one today, 837 accumulative. So, the good news is that the numbers are tracking down or at least stabilizing. We had a county call today and the county numbers have tracked down a bit. Also, good news, the bad news is it's clearly still out there. So, please don't forget that it's out there. We encourage anybody who's gotten vaccinated to get the Excelsior Pass, which is an app available on Android and iOS and is a great way to document your condition. Did you guys have to see?
I don't think so.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to turn the owl view towards you?
That would be a good idea. It's a good idea. Thank you. Feel free to remind me of that. So, we're in a hybrid world where we're meeting in person, but continuing the Zoom aspect of our meetings to try to capture the benefits that were presented by that at the same time as we're back here and PCTV is also recording. So, just to add a couple of points to make, and one is there are three of us sitting here tonight. Paul Alvarez is on the Zoom screen, was feeling a little under the weather tonight and has joined us via Zoom. There is a New York State Executive Order that allows Paul to participate in our meeting or any of us to participate remotely through what, the end of January? Is that the deal?
Beginning of January.
Then David Vinger Mori would otherwise be here but was committed to teach on this Monday. We had previously tried to reschedule our discussion about marijuana and the like for Thursday of last week, had to switch that back in. Unfortunately, David cannot be with us, but he had a previous responsibility for the day job and I can speak with conviction that all of us need to keep the day job running. So, I thank you for that. Couple of announcements to make. One of them, if you're on our Pleasantville list, sir, you will have already seen this. The police chief sent out another note. Please, please, please lock your car doors. Pleasantville has been affected just as almost everybody in Westchester has by a gang of folks that are looking for cars that are unlocked at night. And within that, the subset, looking for cars that are both unlocked and have the keys in them, and they take the car. So, what's the bottom line? Lock your car and bring the keys in. It's not too much to ask. It will protect you and everybody else. So, lock your car doors. We're about to start work on South Side of Memorial Plaza. You want to come in, Eric?
Sure. Yep. So, this week, we are going to be replacing the curb and sidewalk on the north part of Memorial Plaza. That's along the train station or the train track side. So, roughly from the gazebo area up towards the entrance to the train station. Next week, we'll do curb and sidewalks from that point south. So, parking will be restricted on that side. So, this week on the northern side along the train tracks, next week on the southern side along the train tracks. And that's part of our Memorial Plaza South project that's ongoing.
And the PDF that shows our ultimate plan is still online, is it not?
That's right. Under projects and initiatives. Also, to point out, Jeff Conum and his crew from Department of Public Works also installed the new lights. So, those are up.
Which look great.
They look great and they're working to bring electricity to the plaza.
Right. Kudos to Jeff and his team. A good plan and a good project. So, can you give people a sense of this Sawmill Parkway project? I see they're now paving the side they just built.
Yeah, that's right. So, they're paving. We were notified that we would be receiving notification of traffic impacts this week officially. Their new detour route, so we await that. But this is a long project that probably has a year or more left in it. And as soon as we get that notification from DOT, from the Sawmill River Parkway Project Team, we'll be sure to make that public and pass it along.
So, short version of a long story is the new side, the side they just built, is going to be the side of all the traffic.
That's right.
And the old side, the side we've been using, will become a new construction site.
That's right.
It's going to go a while.
Yes.
All right. And then, Eric, well, I'll have to go back to you here. Sorry for my bad panning. Eric, can you also let people know about Con Ed and Lake Street?
Yep. So, Con Ed, this year in general, through the summer, has been doing their three-year vegetation management work. So, folks may have seen different tree crews in the village and basically they're doing their New York State mandated trimming along their power lines. They have a right of way along their utility lines. As part of that work, they're now up in the Lake Street, Nana Hagan area, trimming their lines over there. The mayor and I, Mike Newman from the Parks Department, met with them a few weeks ago to go over exactly where and what they'd be doing. So, they'll be out there through Thursday doing brushwork and trimming.
Okay. In the category of upcoming dates, Saturday, October 23rd, that's this Saturday, the shredder will be at the recycling center. So, if you, what is the deal? Up to two boxes, I think?
Yep. We asked that people remove staples and paper clips.
So, if you have personal documents, not business documents, you can come to the recycling center this Saturday between 10:00 and 1:00, and the county mobile shredder will be there. A free service of the county and one that lots of folks have taken advantage of in the past. Again, I think it's a maximum of two document boxes per arriving car. Tuesday, November 2nd is Election Day. Our early voting begins on Saturday, the 23rd and goes on till Sunday, the 31st. There are 23 locations in Westchester where you can do early voting if you're so inclined. The closest for us obviously is the Mount Pleasant Community Center. Again, that's Saturday, 10:23 through Sunday, 10:31. Details on all of that at citizenparticipation.westchester.gov.com. And then the last date to keep in mind is that Veterans Day is coming up. That is Thursday, November 11. And we will, as we always do, have a ceremony in Memorial Plaza at 11:00 AM on Veterans Day, Thursday, the 11th.
Mr. Mayor, one more reminder, Ragamuffin on
Oh, yes.
Saturday, October 30th. It's back on. A bit of a time change, 11:30 lineup at BRS with the parade at noon, and then a Harvest Fest to follow in Memorial Plaza.
And then the candy crawl, too.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. So, that will be, sorry, that will, starting at 1:00 PM on Halloween, so that's the Sunday, we'll be reenacting the candy crawl that we started last year since it was a pandemic Halloween, still a pandemic Halloween.
Is it a new one or is it a reenactment?
That's what I want.
I'm struggling with the mask here. Anyway, we will, a cattlecade of us will be driving through the village, I believe accompanied by the fire department and
Pevac.
And Pevac as well.
Yep.
Distributing to candy to children on the route. And the route has been posted on our Facebook page, correct?
It's on Facebook and on the Village website.
And on the Village website. So, you can have a sense of where we're going to be when roughly.
Pevac is coming to assist in the celebration as opposed to protecting it.
And
Sugar consumption.
That's right.
Because you can never have enough sugar on Halloween. That is the moral of the story that we're telling.
On that note, we are asking for candy donations. Alyssa was kind enough to craft a donation box, quite festive, and that's located in the Police Department lobby. So, go through the Bedford Road.
It's got a Halloween theme?
The stairs.
Yeah. All right. Be careful what you show us you can do. All right. Is there any comment from the public on any subject of any kind? If you're wanting to speak and are on Zoom, just raise your hand in the participant box. Any comment from anybody?
Or just unmute yourself as well.
Or just unmute yourself. Right.
Hey, Peter, how you doing?
Hey, Paul.
Paul is not a participant. He's a trustee.
So, I wanted to take the opportunity because we hadn't had a chance to speak, but I wanted to thank the DPW, the Police Department of the Village, and many of the volunteers that helped with Oktoberfest. I'm sure some people saw pictures. It was a really good turnout. We had amazing weather that really helped out. And it was incredible just to see how much support the village as a whole, I think it's something we needed. We needed a chance to go out there and see our friends, our family, our neighbors. And what I loved about it was that you saw families. You know, I was out there with my parents, with my kids. So, there were grandparents and grandchildren and kids, you know, running up and down Wheeler and which just shows the potential that this event has for the village where it could be a real game changer for us. It can become a very, very family-oriented event that can be remembered and, you know, add to our recognition in Westchester. But I was really happy to support, like I said, from everyone. It was incredible and I want to thank the board for pushing me to continue with it because towards the end, as I was losing some steam, I was really thinking we should just save it for next year. But I'm glad we did it and it went really well. So, thank you.
So, honestly, thanks go to you, Paul. I'm not sure if we prided you to keep going. I think you prided us not to stop you. So, well done. And Oktoberfest 1.0 is going to be even better in 2.0.
Yeah, it was great, Paul. Thanks a lot for organizing that. I enjoyed it very much without my children. But it was really impressive and I agree that it was something that the community needed.
So, Paul, are you logistically equipped to participate in the resolutions remotely, taking advantage of Governor Hokel's executive order?
I'm good. I'm good to go.
All right.
That's why I'm good to go.
All right. I'm going to share my screen unless there's any further comment from anybody?
Yes.
Yes?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, this is Tom Murphy at 52 Orchard Street.
Hey, Tom.
How's everyone doing?
Fine. How are you?
Good. First, I want to thank Paul and second, everything he said about the Oktoberfest was an excellent event. And the group of people that I was hanging with that night, hope it is something that becomes more than just once annually. It was great to see everyone out. And like you said, Paul, I think it's something the community really needed. A lot of people really needed it and seemed to enjoy it that night. So, congratulations on, I think, a very successful event. And hopefully it gets a lot more promotion and talked about before next time because it was a great event.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate that. Definitely. Well, now that, you know, we're able to do it once and hopefully we put COVID behind us next year, it can be properly prepared a lot better and planned a lot sooner so we could get more vendors and just have an even better turnout. Thank you so much for those words, though. Those are the kind of things that really make this event really special and I'm really happy I was able to do something like this.
Yeah, and I just wanted to mention also, we met with our new Arts Committee during our work session and they're talking about, they have a plan to put out a call for artists to do a public work project in Jackson Alley, which will make Jackson Alley a more inviting space, which is another move towards really taking advantage to public spaces. And I think will also facilitate events like Oktoberfest in the future.
Great. Do you have something further, Tom?
Yes, I actually had a question pertaining to Resolution Number 2021-264, accepting the resignation of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Michael Shalinski.
Yes.
There was a couple of people that I spoke to and we just had a concern, not a concern, a question really, on what the process is for the board, again, accepting the resignation, appointing someone new. I know last meeting, you appointed someone to the board before the resignation was officially accepted, which if, the way I just understand it right now, there is currently, if you did not accept that resolution tonight, there are six people on the board that's supposed to be five. So, we were just curious on what that process is and, you know, how it happened the way it did. That's my question. Hopefully it makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I understand. Okay. So, we received, we're kind of tying up loose ends here. We received this resignation letter in big of September. And I commented at several meetings that we had an opening on the zoning board and we're seeking a new candidate for the zoning board and also talked to a bunch of folks. These positions are mayoral appointments subject to the approval of the board. And in this case, Michael had resigned. The fact that we have the resolution on tonight is just ratifying that in the record. It's not as though we have any capacity to ask anybody to remain past the date they say they're able to do so. And that date had passed for Michael. We have a bunch of other resignations, the retirement of our parking enforcement officer, for example. And I have often mused when we're losing someone we wish would stay, what would happen if we refused? What would happen is they would resign or retire on the date they presented. So, if you or anyone you know is interested in serving on zoning, planning, architecture review, any of those kinds of things, we have a link online at Pleasantville-NY.gov. But I also encourage you just to send an email to me or to Eric or to Alyssa at Village Clerk at Pleasantville-NY.gov. And we keep a file of such folks. I can tell you that the number of folks looking to put themselves in the crossfire of making difficult decisions isn't as big as you think it might be. But if you or someone you know is one of them, let us know. Did I answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, great. Any other comments from anybody? Comment from the public? All right, I'm going to share my screen. Almost there. Okay. Resolution 259, Paul.
Paul, you're muted.
You're muted.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on September 27th, 2021. The minutes are attached to this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, corrections, questions about the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve 260, Nicole.
Okay. Approval of budget amendments for the fiscal year ending in 2022. Budget transfer in the General Fund, $15,000 from contingent to Village Hall of Repairs. Appropriate custodial funds, $194,000 from Parklands to Pool Reconstruction Capital Project Design CD and Permitting. Appropriate Fund Balance General Fund, $30,000 transferred to capital for Nana Hagan Pond Evaluation and Remediation. $194,000 transferred to capital for pool reconstruction. Increased Revenue and Expense Capital Fund, $30,000 inter-fund transfer from General Fund. That's the Nana Hagan Pond Evaluation and Remediation. $50,000 inter-fund transfer from General Fund for Capital Sidewalk Project fiscal year ending 2022. $150,000 inter-fund transfer from General Fund for Street Resurfacing, also fiscal year ending 2022. $194,000 inter-fund transfer from Parklands. That's the pool reconstruction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, let me head your way. I think most of it is self-explanatory, but people might be interested to hear about the Nana Hagan Pond stuff.
Sure. So, we've engaged a engineering firm to look at ways to remediate flooding issues of the pond. So, we're looking at installing a weir system there where we can actually more efficiently drain the pond in advance of rain events. They're going to be conducting hydraulic studies to see at what point we are in threat of overtopping the pond, what type of rain events provide that threat, and ways we may remediate that moving forward. So, we're moving forward. It's De Bruin Engineering out of Long Island. If I could just comment on some of the other
Please do, yes.
So, the $194,000 we're taking from our Parklands Trust Fund, which is what we've discussed, to fund the early stages or really what makes up the meat of the design phase for the pool. That brings us through bidding, the bidding process. So, CDs, construction documents, permitting through DOH and creating the bid packages. The $50,000 and $150,000 that you see there, that's budgeted funds that we've budgeted in our operating budget, the General Fund, that now since, as you saw, we did road repaving and we're doing sidewalk and curbs, we moved that from the budget to capital lines and then pay out of the capital line. We do that because capital lines can actually extend across fiscal years. So, if a repaving project or sidewalk curb project takes a little longer, we can do it in the next fiscal year. So.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any comments or questions on Resolution 260? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve 261.
All right. Did you advance? Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated October 18th, 2021 for fiscal year 2022, covering check numbers 101601 to 101811. From the General Fund, $344,845.64. Water Fund, $24,052.82. And the Capital Fund, $508,350.99. Refuse Fund, $26,058.8. Trust Fund, $15,063 for a total of $918,370.53 with claims attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve 262, Paul.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves a request from Holy Innocence Parish to close the Topkins Avenue parking lot to public parking on Sunday, October 24th, 2021 from 4:00 to 7:00 PM for the purpose of a parish special event. And to quote Peter, just to remind everyone, this is their parking lot.
Thank you for that. You took the words out of my mouth. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve 263, Nicole.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the retirement of Parking Enforcement Officer Marion Boone effective November 13th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
So, as I commented to Tom Murphy when he inquired previously in a different context, this is one of those retirements you'd like to refuse, but we don't get to Marion. Has been with us, what, 17 years, I think?
That's right.
And has done a graceful job in a job that takes some grace. So, all in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve 264. Lost track. Who is that?
Michael.
Michael, yes. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation from Zoning Board of Appeals, Michael Shalinski, effective September 3rd, 2021. The Board of Trustees approved the mayoral appointment of Seth Gladstone to the Zoning Board of Appeals through April 2026 at the Board of Trustees meeting on September 27th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Very, 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 very much appreciate Michael Shalinski's service for the last some years as a member of the ZBA. And once again, congratulate Seth Gladstone on his willingness to step up and occupy that slot. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I motion approve 265. Back to you, Paul.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of the following part-time recreation systems, job code 269. Virginia Bear, $20 an hour rate effective October 26th, 2021 for the Panther Club Program, A7330.101. And Roy Emlet, at a rate of $20 per hour, effective October 18th, 2021 for the Panther Club Program, A7330.101. Further resolved that such appointments are contingent upon successful completion of mandatory background checks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Welcome Virginia and Roy to Panther Club. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve 266, Nicole.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the first amendment, Amendment to Urban Cooperation Agreement. The amendment is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, this is the CBDG program, right?
Yep. We're part of the Urban County Consortium. There was an amendment to this big contract. The county is asking all the member municipalities to pass a resolution verifying. It's a minor change in the contract about ADA accessibility and rules and regulations. So.
And the village has benefited from CDBG, its Community Development Block grants, when available, and is benefiting right now with partial subsidy to the new generator at the senior center.
That's right. And an emergency standby generator along with new rooftop condenser units for the HVAC system.
Your new specialty.
That's right. That's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve 267, Paul.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Recreation Department to hold the annual Ragamuffin Parade on Bedford Road in Harvest Day, Memorial Plaza on Saturday, October 30th, 2021 at 11:30 AM. Further resolved, the Board of Trustees authorizes Police Chief to post no parking signs in Memorial Parking Lot in advance of the event and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, Saturday, October 30th is the Ragamuffin Parade. Sunday, October 31st is the Candy Crawl.
Correct.
We've pushed the parade a little bit later than some years it has been in order to assist and to avoid conflict with the farm market.
That's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Get your costumes ready. 268. Oh, Nicole, you got the big one.
Yeah. Whereas a project for the Mannville Road Corridor improvements in the Village of Pleasantville, PIN 8761.83, known as the project, is eligible for funding under Title 23 U.S. Code as amended. That calls for the apportionment of the cost such program to be borne at the ratio of 80% federal funds and 20% non-federal funds. And whereas the Village of Pleasantville desires to advance the project by making a commitment of 100% of the non-federal share of the costs of construction and construction inspection work, now therefore that the Pleasantville Village Board hereby approves the above-subject project and it is hereby further resolved that the Pleasantville Village Board hereby authorizes the Village of Pleasantville to pay in the first instance 100% of the federal and non-federal share of the cost of construction and construction inspection work for the project or portions thereof. And it is further resolved that the sum of $1,888,500 is hereby apportion pursuant to Resolution Number 2021-160 and made available to cover the cost of participation in the above phase of the project. And it is further resolved that in the event of the full federal and non-federal share cost of the project, I'm sorry, if it should be, exceeds the amount apportioned above, the Pleasantville Village Board shall convene as soon as possible to appropriate set excess amount immediately upon the notification by the village administrator thereof. And it is further resolved that the Pleasantville Village Administrator be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary Village Administrator be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary agreements, certifications or reimbursement requests for federal aid and/or applicable Marchiselli aid on behalf of the village of Pleasantville with the New York State Department of Transportation in connection with the advancement or approval of the project and providing for the administration of the project and the municipality's first instance funding of project costs and permanent funding of the local share, oh, this is a mouthful, of federal aid and state aid eligible project costs and all project costs within appropriations therefore that are not so eligible. And it is further resolved that in addition to the village administrator, the following municipal titles, superintendent of public works, village engineer, village treasurer, and mayor, are also hereby authorized to execute any necessary agreements or certifications on behalf of the municipality slash sponsor with NYSDOT in connection with the advancement or approval of the project identified in the state local agreement. Resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be filed with the New York State Commissioner of Transportation by attaching it to any necessary agreement in connection with the project. And it is further resolved, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Attached letter from DOT supplemental agreement and Schedule A to agreement.
Is there a second?
Jeez Louise.
This is what bureaucrats call poetry.
Yes.
Eric, essentially this says, we want the $1,008,000 that you're gonna give us.
So, what, what this is saying, this resolution, if you haven't figured out, was drafted by New York State DOT. And when the project was first formulated, the 1.8 that's authorized was from the original budget. So, that's what they're going off of. Now, as you know, we've authorized the bond of up to $4 million in support of the project, but.
Which, to be clear, is authorization, not a decision to actually do it.
That's right.
And we're at the phase of soon sending it out to bid and finding out what it will really cost.
That's right.
And there's the chance that we will pull the plug.
Sure. And, and to that point, we are on track to bid this project out right now. Actually, just got news from DOT that right now the funds are getting held up in bureaucracy, waiting for authorization from the federal government. But we should get that affirmation this week, which would put us on track to bid it out around mid-November and have results in hand by later November, maybe December. And at that point, we would know, you know, the ballpark of this project.
Okay.
What this resolution essentially says is, if we do move forward with it, we will fund the balance between what the grant provides and what the project cost actually is.
Okay.
So, I think, Nicole, we should have it embroidered or a needlepoint then give it to you.
Yeah, this is gonna be my party gift when I.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All?
Aye.
All right, motion approved. 269, Michael.
Whereas the Board of Trustees of the village of Pleasantville is considering moving forward with the proposed pool reconstruction project to redesign and upgrade the pool in Nana Hagan Park. And whereas the village board desires to comply with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the Department of Environmental Conservation of the State of New York, being 6 NYCRR Part 617, as amended with respect to the project. And whereas the project is not subject to review under SECRE since it involves the rehabilitation or reconstruction of a structure or facility in kind on the same site, which is listed as a Type II action under 6 NYCRR 617.5, Section C2. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Pleasantville hereby declares that the project constitutes a Type II action under that law and that no further action is required under SECRE.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 270, Paul.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approve, hereby authorizes the village administrator or superintendent of public works to sign an agreement with Con Ed for their electric vehicle make-ready program. Attachment filing the electric vehicle make-ready program agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, Eric, this gives us reimbursement for the electric car charging station.
Yep, and I believe we have Jeff on the Zoom, but he's been working closely with Con Ed. We were notified by Con Ed that we need to bring additional electrical capacity to the plaza in order to install these electric vehicle charging stations. And Con Ed does have a, a program to reimburse municipalities for that cost. So, this allows us to enter into that program.
Great. Comments, questions? Get us back to the middle here.
Thanks for being on top of that, Jeff. I really appreciate it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jeff. 271, Paul.
Aye.
Oh, Nicole.
Yep. Just a second. Oh, there. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Franklin Jackson Jr., Court Attendant, effective September 29, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for your service, Franklin. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve 272, Michael.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Jack Tobin, 108 Sarls Lane, to hold a block party and thereby close Sarls Lane on Saturday, October 23, from 11 a.m. until 9 p.m.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Sounds like fun on Sarls Lane. All in favor?
That's a long one.
Yes, it's a long, well, it's a lively bunch. All in favor?
Aye.
273, Paul.
Whereas by resolution adopted on March 30, 2004, the resolution, the village of Pleasantville Planning Board granted final subdivision approval to Pleasant Village Estates, the grantor. And whereas pursuant to the resolution, grantor is required to submit an irrevocable offer of dedication to the village of Pleasantville and recordable form satisfactory to the council for the village of all land included in the streets, utility, drainage, site, and sidewalk easements, as shown on site plaque, and not specifically reserved for private use. Together with the policy or certificate of title, company qualified to do business, business New York State showing the title to the deed to be recorded in the county clerk's office at the expense of the applicant. Whereas the village board is in receipt of an irrevocable offer of dedication from grantors for Springfield Court, which grantors propose to dedicate to the village of Pleasantville. And whereas the irrevocable offer of dedication has been reviewed by the village council and found to be acceptable. And whereas the procedure for voluntary dedication of private streets or land to village, to a village for use as public streets is set forth in Village Law Section 6-610, which provides that an offer of dedication must be in writing and must be accepted by means of a resolution by the village board following a public hearing. Thereafter, the private owner of the road must then execute a deed to the Springfield Court, which also must be accepted by the village board by means of resolution following a public hearing. And whereas the next step is village, the next step is village is required to schedule a public with respect to consider the acceptance of irrevocable offer of dedication of Springfield Court. The public meeting?
Public hearing, it should be.
Yes.
Public hearing with respect to.
And plat should be plaque?
No, plat's not.
Oh, plat's plat. What's plat?
It's a weird zoning word, referring to.
Now therefore be resolved that the village board hereby schedules a public hearing for November 22, 2021, to consider acceptance of irrevocable offer of dedication of Springfield Court to the village of Pleasantville by credit.
Is there a second?
Second.
The beginning of the end of a long story, where a number of new homes were built on Springfield Court. And as in the normal process, the, the street that will ultimately become a village street is in private hands until it's finished and ready for, ready for dedication to us. That's been a long haul for the folks who live on Springfield Court. Now, we've gotten their public hearing on November 22. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve 274, Nicole.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Rebecca Myers as library trustee to the Mount Pleasant Library Board to assume the current vacant seat for a term to expire December 2024. Further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Eric Newman as library trustee to the Mount Pleasant Library Board effective January 1, 2022 for a term to expire December 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you to both of these two folks, and thanks to David Vingamori, who's the liaison to the Mount Pleasant Library in working through this and identifying these two folks as, as good members of the library board. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved 275.
Before we read the next resolution, would it be possible to add one more name?
Let's read it as it's presented, and then you can propose a change.
Okay.
Get the mover and second to agree.
Sounds good.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Lou Dorio, Loretta Chivetta, Erin Ballard, Susan Chapongo, and Demia Madden to the Pleasantville Police Communication, Community Outreach and Engagement Committee.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay.
So, may I propose that we add Helene Dahn, and I can spell it for you. So, H-E-L-E-N-E, last name D-A-H-N.
D-A-H-N.
Right.
D-A-H-N-A-N, correct.
Okay, is that acceptable to the mover and the second?
Yes.
I absolutely support Helene.
I do too. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can we, can we just explain that this is, we're, we're putting together the Pleasantville Police Communication, Community Outreach and Engagement Committee, which is one of the things that we laid out in our police reform process. That was one of the things that came out of it. The person we just added will, will represent a septic community. And so, we are constituting the community, this committee, and the first meeting will take place later this month.
And let me also add, if there are other folks in the community interested in it, let us know. Probably Nicole's the best point person. What we're hoping is that it's an ongoing committee that can give us feedback about the ways in which the police force can both better serve and better knit itself into the life of the community.
Right, and we're interested in having different perspective and different sections of the community represented. So, if you're interested in joining, please let me know.
Okay, thank you for that. 276, Paul.
I think it's Michael's up, right?
I just did that one.
Yeah, he just did that one.
I missed it, my mistake. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Tina Sculpini, Recreation Assistant Panther Club, effective October 14, 2021. Attached is your declining resignation letter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for your work on our behalf, Tina. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. That's the end of our regular resolutions. Is there any comment from the public on any subject? Is there any comment from the board on any subject? Okay, so our, our next regular meeting, again, just to remind folks, we meet typically on the second and fourth Mondays of every month. So, today is our second meeting in October. Our next meeting is on Monday, November 8, with the second meeting in November on Monday, November 22. We encourage folks to be involved. Remember, then we have the shred mobile this weekend at the recycling center. And coming up at the end of next week, on Saturday, the 30th, is the Ragamuffin Parade. Sunday, the 31st, the Candy Crawl. And then we'll have an opportunity to remind you when we're here on November 8 of the ceremony for Veterans Day on November 11.
I think I read it next week, correct?
I told you what I was gonna say too.
Yes.
We meet next week.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. You're right. Thank you for pointing that out. We got completely, I got screwed up there, as our schedule got completely screwed up. We have another meeting next week, October 25.
That's right.
Two weeks in a row. Again, we were gonna, our normal meeting would have been the 11th, it was Columbus Day. It got pushed to Thursday, the 14th. That got changed, that screwed up David's schedule. We're here today. Thank you for pointing that out. So, we have a regular meeting next week on the 25th. So, that will give us an opportunity to remind you about the Ragamuffin Parade again.
And though we will meet before Election Day, just, yeah, just a reminder that in an off, off-year election, voting matters even more. And we have town board and we have county seats up and state Supreme Court. So, just a reminder to everyone to exercise your, your right to vote.
If you go to the Westchester County Board of Elections, which you could find easily by Googling them at the westchestergov.com site, citizen participation, all the info is there, not only about the regular November 2 voting date, but also the opportunity to vote early at any of the 23 locations. So, any further comment? With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll get it right this time. See you next week. Thank you all.